... for Monday, February the fourteenth for the Board of Supervisors. First order of business is into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-3711; Discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific officers, appointees or employees of any public body; One, Adjustment and Appeals Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you will please call the roll.
Mr. Fritzkowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Sheriff Leavins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now in closed session.[988.22]
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fuchekowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Out of closed session. Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Mott.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Fuchekowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Right. At this time, I'd ask that our county administrator, Craig Meadows, would you lead us into the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Yes, if we could stand, please, for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, presentations, and I see Mr. David Clark from Virginia Department of Transportation.
Good evening. This is, I guess, obviously my first time in the new, in the new space. It's very similar, but, yes, very, very well done. It looks nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a whole lot of updates to give you, or I could go through every single snowstorm that we've, we've had, but we'll rather not do that. They're all pretty much, actually, they're not all the same. That's one of the things we say, Vito, no snowstorm is exactly the same. And we, you know, sometimes can't, don't know why, some seem to push off a lot easier than others, some don't. Obviously, it's road temperature, and we do think the brine that we put down helps quite a bit. In fact, we get calls for more of it on all secondaries. We can't quite get to all of them. We try to hit the primaries, the major ones, and things like that. And one of the storms we had, it was, it was amazing how well everything came off after that. But this past one, we were pretty lucky that it wasn't, didn't turn out to be quite what they expected. We'll take that. But really beyond that, I don't have a lot of maintenance updates. The, the weather's been up and down, so we have been able to do some patching on Eller Road, Merrimack, some on Pepper's Ferry, and in Pilot. Doing some of gravel roads. We don't do a lot of really spreading of stone on the gravel roads in the winter unless we really have to, because you get snowy and it pushing it all off. And I know we're entering into mud season now, so we will be hauling a lot more stone here in the next few months as we get out of snow and things start to thaw and it really starts to get muddy. We're gonna keep an eye on some of the ones that, that tend to get really soft and trying to get those, our worst ones. Clean some pipe on Allegheny Springs Road. We got the, the spots at Gazeebo and across the, the road from that, cut a little bit of brush and picked up trees, because some of the storms did bring down some trees. So we've been, we've had people working nights for trees and snow and all kinds of things. So that's really all I have, as far as maintenance, done a couple of the small things and mostly kept up with snow. We are working on keeping Yellow Sulfur Road in, in shape as best we can until the spring when they will pave that. They're gonna wait till it gets good and warm, probably in April or May, to fix that up and then get the, the hard surface on that. And that'll be the, the finishing of their six-year plan project. Then we'll be working on the low water structure at Taylor Hollow and trying to finish or figure the, still working on right-of-way and design for the rest of that road, whether we take out the big curve or what we do with the big curve on, on Taylor Hollow. That's all I have as far as updates go.
Okay, well, thank you. Let me go around the room and see if any of the supervisors have any comments or questions, and we'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
How you doing, Mr. Clark?
Hi.
I have just a couple, and they just recently came up. I had an email, and the guy said that there were several people concerned about why there wasn't lighting on that traffic circle on Prices Fork Road, the new one there, the new construction, that new development.
On Prices Fork Road there, yeah.
I know they've tore out their signs there several times with accidents, and the thought was maybe that would help.
I had heard, actually, this, I think we got a call in our office about the same thing. It's not, I mean, the, the, the traffic circle, the roundabout there was required and it was put in by others. It wasn't a VDOT project as part of our requirements when people, you know, have a new entrance or bring a new road in. Generally, lighting of one is not an automatic requirement of it. We'll take a look at that and see. It may be something we have to look into if, if, if we are getting a lot of, a lot of crashes there. It's something that we could do as a, it would be like a six-year plan project, but we could probably do it with some funds from that and maybe some from the safety and operational funds.
Yeah, I wasn't sure who paid for that, if it should have been in the contract, or, you know, when the contractor put it in, but anyway.
Yeah, but that, I mean, it's not like every traffic circle's lit. It's, it's just not a typical.
Right.
Part of them. But traffic, I mean, lighting in general is a, is a, is a good safety feature of any road, you know, the more lighting you have.
Right, right. And there was another question concerning the same location about the bike path. They said the bike path got pinched off before you went into the circle, and I didn't, and I, and I know that, I go through there several times a day, but, and then, of course, they said that it wasn't big enough. And I don't have any problem going around there in a school bus, so I have a feeling that it is big enough. Built to standards, so, anyway.
Yeah, and that might be some, some kind of a sign. It was, we, we have what the, the same kind of thing on Prices Fork Road as we have on Lester's Gate. There's a, there's a wide space to the, to the, to the right of the edge line. It's for bikes, but it's not specifically a bike lane. It's not wide enough to be a true standard bike lane. It's kind of a, just kind of a, a feature that we put on the road. We were able to widen it and keep the edge line in. I've talked to, actually, some bicyclists down at, on Lester's Gate about that, and it's kind of a mixed, mixed opinion on those. The width of the pavement can stay the same. You can put the edge line all the way out on the edge. What that does, it makes it look like there's no room for bikes, but what that does tend to do is cars will drive it and they'll keep the rocks and stuff knocked off. If you have the, the edge line in, cars don't go over there, but it tends to collect a lot more debris and stuff, so it's sort of a 50/50 thing on, on how they like those or not. I actually stopped a bicyclist down there and asked them that.
Well, that thing's gotten changed over the years, because when they first redid Prices Fork Road 30 years ago, or so whenever that was, there were designated bike lanes, because they were almost eight foot wide on both sides. And the lanes were narrow.
Yeah.
And then when they went through and resurfaced it the first time, they started going away. Until now, there's just not anything there, but anyway, I, I don't know if there was, is room for a bike lane, you know, if it were re-measured. I'm not sure what a standard lane is, but those are wide. I don't know that. So anyway, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Supervisor Bone.
I particularly like the lines on Lester's Gate, just for the drivers to, to know where the road is, because when it is dark, you, you know, if you didn't have the sidelines, you'd.
I always like a little bit of shoulder, personally, yeah.
So, other than that, no, no, no questions. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Supervisor Demott.
Thank you for being here this evening. I guess I'll just echo what Supervisor Shepherd said about lighting in the circle, if we could look into that and see what our options are. As somebody that infrequently goes down that road in the dark, it comes up on you, that circle does. There's not a lot that is really telling you that you're coming at it and going in one direction, it's pretty straight through.
I was gonna say, it's, it's not symmetrical either. That's what throws people off, too, yeah.
Yeah, the other way is, is quite.
Going out, it's almost a straight shot.
And then with bike lanes, I, I see the conflict as somebody that uses them, they're rocky. It's good to have, but they, they are rocky when they're designated, so that's a challenge. Thank you for all the work that has been done with the snow removal. It's gone really, really well. I have not heard any complaints, and I think the roads have been in really nice condition, so thank you for that.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor King.
Just, I know you said you've been out patching. Maybe if you could send the crew out there to look at Meta Creek.
Oh, okay.
It's really falling apart now. Yeah, I know it's not too much longer we gonna be trimming grass. Hope you get the same people back that come out on Five Points and mowed around that area, because it's still mowed down. They wasn't afraid to mow.
Yeah.
Keep them on that road.
All right, we'll get it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Fuchekowski.
I, I just got a couple of things. Do you know if the paving schedule has come out yet?
It's, it should be out, yeah, pretty soon. It's been, it's been out, it's been bid on. Sometimes we have to adjust it in the spring. I don't think, I don't think we've had to make any adjustments, so they'll be starting here in a couple of weeks. I can get a list.
The only thing I'm concerned about, David, is was several months back before, I'm sure they even considered it, but just for the 460 and down through Shawsville and Ellison, if you have any kind of plans or dates for that, any kind of paving there.
Okay.
Because I had a citizen inquire, and they kind of would like to give him some information if I can, so, yeah.
That was, I can, I can find out for sure about that. It's the secondaries that we have to adjust sometimes. Primary should be all set.
Okay. And I know you already mentioned this about the gravel roads that you, you don't like to do a whole lot with them, but probably somebody needs to take a look at that little tiny wooden bridge there at Split Rail, right off of Mount Pleasant. There's a big drop, and it's, I think it's right on the, right before the bridge. I don't know if there's something going on there that might need something more serious or not, but take a look at that. There's also several other bad places on Split Rail. There's, there's, there's a spot there that always deteriorates first. There must be water coming through it or something, but, but that, that bridge kind of caught my eye the other day, so if you could look at that. The biggest thing is, I had a citizen call me who is a veteran, and the VA had sent a, a van out to pick him up for his appointment at the VA hospital, and they couldn't find a street because the street sign is gone. And this is in a contentious area that we, I know you've dealt with before, right on North Fork Road at Reese Mountain Road. The sign was moved to where, I guess it was the Rowanoke Resource Authority, when they bought all that property, the sign was put up there at the new entrance, the paved entrance, but either somebody knocked it down. I went looking for it, as a matter of fact. I figured it would be laying on the side of the road, but I couldn't find it.
Okay, well, even with some of the private roads, we work, our, our sign guy works with the county to get the 911 signs and put them up, so we'll find out what, what happened.
Yeah, yeah, if you could just make note of that one, because, yeah, they did another one on Allegheny Springs Road. They got right on it and took care of it. Citizen was very happy, so that's all I've got.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Okay, I wanted to also echo the thanks for the snow removal. And on the Prices Fork, you know, like when you're headed from Blacksburg towards Radford, I was wondering, maybe could the sign be moved up further? Because it's like you come on it really fast, you know, with your speed limit, and I don't know if that's an issue, but to me, if people had a little bit more warning, of course, I don't know if, I don't know if that would help or not, but that was something I had thought about, because I go down there pretty often.
Okay, yeah, and that's a good idea. We'll look at a lot of things. I hate to say it, you know, it's no secret, sometimes we do put rumble strips down in, in, in advance of some kind of a thing that people should be aware of. We've done, especially if there's like a stop sign that comes up on people quickly, we'll put rumble strips down. The problem with those, they get, first of all, they get torn up with snow plows, so they're not, but then again, nothing's real permanent out there, so that's not really the, the issue. They are, they are loud, they're loud so that the drivers can hear them and feel them, but the neighbors don't like them, so.
Right.
We'll be very careful. I just throw that out there, I have not studied it for that, and it may be a terrible place for rumble strips, but we'll try signs for something not quite so loud.
I don't know, dear, if that would help or not, but I know what you're saying, like you're just, all of a sudden, you're there and you're like, whoop. So, and the other thing I wanted to bring up, I had emailed Craig and Bree, Ms. Hopkins, earlier. I had a citizen ask me about, you know, again, the entrances that are gonna be coming on to 460 from Brush Mountain when all those trails are completed, and we talked about this before, being a public safety issue. It also is an issue, you know, like those trails are gonna be used, it's gonna, it's gonna bring tourists in and economic development into the county, but the citizens are real anxious about, you know, is, is the funding, and that, I guess that's on the county side, you know, going to be, you know, applied for the, the Federal Land Access Program grant, but on the VDOT side about figuring out, you know, more about the ownership and what can be done, because I know whatever's done is gonna be expensive, especially for one of those entrances. And so Ms. Hopkins said she was gonna be reaching out to Mr. Miller in the next couple of days. I just wanted to make you aware of that and make sure I brought the citizens' concern to both the county and to VDOT.
Yeah, that's something that we've been paying attention to, and, and we'll be working with everybody to try to figure out something.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
And again, Mr. Clark, we just want to thank you and VDOT for all the snow removal and the work that you all do in preparation for storms, to keep our roads safe. I don't have a whole lot, what, I just wanted to go over the Route 114 in Prices Fork. I know we had funding, special funding through the.
Yes.
Commonwealth Transportation on that, and that's not to begin until 2023, is that correct?
I'm not sure when that starts. I know they, they, they've applied for it and got it. I mean, it's, it's there, but I don't know when, I'll find out by next meeting when that's gonna be programmed. There'll be design money first, might, might take some right-of-way acquisition of some kind, but they can start on design. They've got an overall price, but we don't need all of it right away, because the design and right-of-way comes first and then the construction, so the construct, maybe the construction's not until then, but I don't know.
I can't remember. I, I, we were very fortunate to get that added to the, to the VDOT plan, but I cannot remember how soon they're gonna be moving forward.
I'll find out, let y'all know.
That would be great.
It's readily available.
That will be of great interest, the sooner the better, especially as on our agenda tonight is redistricting, so that would be very interesting for that spot as well. Does anybody have any follow-up? Mr. Clark, as well, always, we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have guideline for public address. The Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving of their attention during the public address set aside each meeting. A public address sign, signup sheet will be available outside the meeting room. Speakers are requested to provide their name, address, phone number, and a list of the subject matter on the signup sheet. Following the names on the signup sheet, other speakers will be allowed. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to. All comments must be directed to the chair and supervisors from the speaker's lectern in the front of the room. I don't have anyone on the sign-up sheet, but if there's anyone that would like to come forward, if you'll please state your name and address, and you'll have four minutes.
Good evening. I don't want to be all doom and gloom all the time. I want to tell y'all, everywhere I've been, Virginia has the best combination of high-speed limits and quality roads. Nothing worse than high-speed limits and potholes. It's awful. So. Now, I've gotten two emails so far saying that there is nothing y'all can do. So I have something basic and easy, and I'm positive one of you could do this in just a few minutes.
Sir, could you tell us your name and address, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My name's John Ashley. I live at 2675 Glade Drive, Christiansburg, Virginia 24073. And I'm positive one of you could do this in just a few minutes. Specifically what I have said about the abduction. If deception happens to be to a judge that it can't be prosecuted, I have two law enforcement agencies on video confirming the deception to the judge. The email's from the Sheriff's Department. They can show you the paperwork, and so can I. If I am 100% not allowed to tell a grand jury about this and let my peers decide what is right and wrong, just to, I would just like you to get on the official Montgomery County Facebook page and post that. Post that, post that if you do it the right way, child abduction is legal here. Then underneath that, write, but there's nothing we can do about it. If that status quo, it shouldn't be a problem saying it. But your constituents do not believe this policy. So make sure they know that not only is this policy true, but it could happen to them. Now, I understand the limits of your abilities. So from here on out, I will invite our local state representatives to attend these meetings. Now, back to what I've already written. You know it's getting bad when the government will put you in a hospital for repeating the government's policy. If access on the first floor of the 700 building by policy will put me in a hospital for repeating the sheriff's policy, and then by policy, do it again to me for complaining, why would a reasonable person expect saying the same thing to someone on the second floor would have a different result? The same magistrate that will look at my paperwork and say, sorry, there's nothing I can do to help you, will turn around and sign papers saying I can't care for myself after I tell a mental health worker the exact same thing I had told them. If a mental health worker doesn't know the government's policy, it is fine to call someone who isn't delusional, delusional, and definitely never apologize. That's what happened to me. I filed the complaints. Access to the mental health department didn't do anything wrong, so this must be the policy. What a great policy. I wasn't trying to kill myself before this, but I began after, though. It started small, taking handfuls of sleeping pills to see if I would wake up. Augustine, I can't say his last name, but it's spelled K.P.O.S.O.W.A., is a professor of sociology at the University of California. He did a study between suicide rates of men and women with the subcategories of married, separated, and divorced. He found that separated men were 2.4 times as likely as to commit suicide as a married, as a single man. He also found that a divorced man is 8.3 times more likely, or 830% more likely, to commit suicide than a single man. Now, I'm just a guy with a notebook and a phone. And if I know this, I'm sure the high-dollar executive at New River Valley Community Services knows this too. It would be in the best financial interest to cover up a suicide epidemic caused by the family courts. Please instruct New River Valley Community Services to declare the family court system a public health emergency and causing a mental health crisis, just like how the CDC can apparently control housing. Thank you, and y'all have a nice Valentine's Day.
Is there anyone else? We will close the public address? Addendum?
We'll addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
No addendum. Next is into work session. Do I have a resolution, I'm sorry, do I have a, yes, a resolution to, I'm sorry?
Motion.
Motion. Thank you. Thank you.
To go into work session.
Second.
A motion and a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Fuchikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Madam Chair and Board members, this evening, Marty McMahon, the county attorney, is going to provide us an update on the county's redistricting process. And I know we have some other folks in the audience tonight that, I don't know if you're planning on having them speak. But Marty, it's all yours.
Yeah, my role is actually pretty small. What I want to do first is maybe give a little context of where we are, why we're doing this, some of the rules we had to follow. And then meanwhile, I'll ask Ingrid to come up, and she'll start getting the maps up. And Ingrid's gonna walk, if you guys know Ingrid, she's with GIS. She's gonna go through each district and talk about the changes. And she's also gonna talk to you about some of the difficulties we had, or she had, in coming up with this, some of the rules we had to play with and things like that. So first of all, local governments, as you guys know, both city councils and county board of supervisors are responsible for creating the election, local election districts in their, in their localities. That includes precincts and polling places. The Constitution requires you to reapportion, redraw those boundaries every 10 years, and that's where we are now. And when you do that, you're required to use the most recent census data, which we, which we were about, I don't know how many months late getting, but we just finally got. The big thing that we had to do in coming up with a proposal for you on the reapportion, redrawing, is that we had to make the districts equal again. So over the 10-year period, the districts had grown to a certain extent where they were no longer equal. What is equal, at the state and local level, the Supreme Court of the United States has said if it's substantially equal, then it's equal. What that means is it doesn't have to be precisely equal, but it has to be within a plus or minus of 5% deviation. So if you're within that deviation of 5% from the ideal population, the ideal population for us is whatever that number is, X divided by seven, because we have seven districts. And so if we're, if each one of our districts are within 5% of that ideal number, then our, our, our districts are presumed to be substantially equal. You'll find at the federal level, for the congressional districts, there are much stricter standards. It's called strict standard of equality. And they have to be as close to perfect, as close to perfectly equal as possible. And in fact, the plan that the Virginia Supreme Court submitted, each one of the House, each one of the congressional districts have the same amount of people in it, which is pretty crazy, if you think about it. I don't know how they did it, but they did it. And then with the state level, they're very, very close. There's a, a lot of them are the same, some are just a few off here and there. And then what we're proposing today is we're well within our 5% deviation on, on your districts. Some of the other things we had to deal with, they have to be, as you know, districts have to be contiguous and compact. When we're drawing those districts, we have to use clearly observable boundaries. So they have to be in-existent, talking about roads, streets, highways, rivers, streams. Could be drainage features, anything natural or constructed, that's a physical feature we can use. One of the things we have that makes it difficult is we can't, you know, census blocks, we, we use those to get the population numbers when we're, when we're making the districts. We're not allowed to split those census blocks. So some census blocks are as big as, what, 8,000, we found one, or 6,000 or 8,000 people in it?
Cool. Yeah, the densest one was over 6,000.
Yeah, and then some are much, much smaller. So that also makes it a little bit difficult in, in doing your, in doing the redistricting. And you'll find, you'll, and that's one of the things, you might get a question like, well, if I'm in a district that needs people, why am I also giving away people? And one of the reasons is, there's a couple of reasons. One is because of these split precincts, I mean, because of the census blocks, we had to give back in order to get more from, from another spot. And then the other big thing was, you're not allowed to have any split precincts. That's a state law mandate. We cannot have them. That means you cannot have anyone, it must be wholly contained within a single congressional district, state senate, and house delegation. And so you can't, you can't split those at all. And so that was the, the main rule we were dealing with when we, when we had to redo this. Because we had numerous splits from the last time. Because what happened last time is we did ours, and then the state did theirs, and they didn't, and they did not follow the, the town boundary mainly. If you look at the first couple of pages in your booklet, you can see where they, they really did, they being the people with the Supreme Court did a really good job in, in following the town corporate boundaries in both setting up the two senate districts and then the two house districts. And so that, that definitely made it easiest, easier for us in, in setting up ours. The other thing we were able to do, because of Ingrid's, how good she is at this, is that we have no town splits at all. So all town, all town precincts are just in the town. And so, I mean, those are county residents voting, but anyone out in the unincorporated area are now, are no longer in precincts that are also have town residents. So the general registrar now has zero split ballots, which will make it easier for her, a little cheaper for her, and less chance of error happening. The, we've created how many new precincts? I, I mean, five new precincts?
Four, five.
We added another one at Tech on campus, so there's three over there now. Same building, just to be divided, and Tech was supportive of that. And the people who vote there have to live on campus. That's the one rule Tech has. And so those precincts are set up accordingly. And so the thing with precincts is, when you create precincts, they cannot have more than 5,000 registered voters in them when you create them. And they can't have fewer than 100. And then the other rule is, after a presidential election, if, if any precinct has more than 4,000 people voting, so it's a different standard. It's voting instead of registered, but they're all registered, or they wouldn't be voting, right? But if 4,000 or more vote, then the registrar has to contact you, the board of supervisors, and say, hey, we gotta change our precincts to get that one lower. Or if it's more than one, to get them lower. And so we took that into consideration when we redid some of the precincts and changed some of those around. Some of them were approaching that 4,000 or above 4,000, so we wanted to get them down. We wanted to add to some that were smaller, that made it more convenient for people to vote. And so, without any questions before she starts?
Yeah, I've got one.
Sure.
When does this officially take effect? Is it on Election Day this year, or is it?
No, it'll take effect when, when you board approves the ordinance, which the next step after tonight, tonight's a work session. Then we're, on the agenda, we have a resolution where you agree to set up a public hearing for March 14th. And then we'll kind of go through this again, and then we'll have speakers speak if they want to speak. We're also going to be sending these all out to the libraries and out to the town, two town halls. And we're going to make it available on the county website. And so we're gonna really push this, so as many people as, that want to know, you know, will know about it. And then, so the board will then consider an ordinance that changes everything, reestablishes them. And once that goes into effect, then that's the new precincts and the new setup. And it would, I think we have a, we think we have a primary. And so it'll, it'll be in effect for that primary in June? Yeah, June.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there any way that you can give us the pictures of the census blocks?
Pictures of the census?
There's hundreds of them.
Yeah.
Well,
if you, if there was an area in particular, we could maybe blow it up, right? And give you some.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like downtown Blacksburg?
Yes.
Yeah. Not just downtown, but much of Blacksburg.
There are many census blocks.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions from any supervisors before we move on?
With regards to census blocks, this last go-around, the stuff that we've been voting under for this last decade, had any census block been split?
No, no, you can't split them.
Yeah.
I found this on the web.
Sorry.
Census blocks are the smallest geography maintained by the census. So if you have a block, you know, bounded by a street on every single side, that has to be a census block. Observable boundaries are what create them. So there are census blocks that are geographically very large. If there's no stream or road running through to create a subdivision. And they often don't have as many people either. They're bigger, but they're smaller.
And Marty, was there another deadline too with the registrar?
Well, there's an internal deadline through the state, 21st, is that correct?
Yeah.
March 21st.
So we are kind of pushed for time?
Yeah, we're definitely pushed for time. The main reason, it made no sense to do this until the, until the Supreme Court did theirs, because then we'd just be splitting precincts. And so we, it, it just made no sense. I mean, we did a little preliminary work before, but we really couldn't go and do the hard mapping until we had their, their maps. And so once we had those, we were able to do it. And we actually, it was done pretty quickly.
Yep.
And it's because of GIS and Ingrid. It's amazing work they've done, so. I remember, this is my third one, and the first one we did with paper and maps and calculator. And now she just, she's up there with her maps, just changing it. It's really neat, so. Anyway, she's gonna step through each district. And then, and also, if you have any questions, it feels free to interrupt her, especially if it's what she's talking about at that moment, because I think it'd be easier to address.
Yeah, I guess I'll go ahead and jump in. Marty already covered a lot about the rules that we were dealing with. But I'll start with a quick view of what the census numbers looked like, what we were left with. There's two population columns because of this rule about using the prisoner-adjusted population. It did not make a huge difference for our locality. But basically, after the 2020 census count was all said and done, all of our districts grew a little bit at least, except for C and G. Our new ideal population target was 14,285, or within that 5% range. So even while we were waiting for the general assembly lines to come out, we knew which districts were starting out kind of high in populations and which ones were a little low.
And we also know that G was miscounted. I mean, we know that.
Thank you very much. I was gonna make that point.
Yes.
G was grossly undercounted because the students were not here to be counted when the census was going on.
It was quite, quite jarring seeing those numbers.
As residents of G,
Yes.
Yeah, there's just as many people, actually much more people there now.
Yes. And G was a district that we knew even before the census, we were gonna have to add a precinct, simply because of how many voters were participating in the two precincts we had in G. This is a nice visual of all of our current districts, what, what the counts looked like. Before we redid it, did any redistricting, this is what the 2020 census count gave us. And G and C are definitely below those margins, while E and F were our, they, they saw the most growth. And this really quick, this is what our current populations are now that we've redrawn the lines. We've gotten everybody into the range where they need to be. Marty's already gone over this, but you know, this difference between precinct populations versus district populations. Districts are determined by actual population. Precincts are more of the logistical concern on how many voters do you have going to the same polling place?
Do you have to have a precinct polling place in your precinct?
It has to be, so the, yeah, each precinct has its own poll. That poll, if it's not inside the precinct, must be within a mile of the closest boundary.
Okay.
And there's a few where we use that one-mile exception.
Yeah. And Marty talked about the no more split precinct rule, which was a very big driving factor in which was a very big driving factor in doing this work. And we also took some other factors into consideration. Feedback from the registrar's office, talking about where they'd had problem areas in the past, different poll locations. Their, you know, concerns about where we knew we'd probably need to add a poll, maybe where there's maybe not enough people in this other area where we, you know, might need to comply. All the incumbents have been kept in their districts. And that's for board and school board. And just methodology wise, we started with the boundaries as they were and then worked from there, rather than starting all over from scratch. And just we've, we achieved all of our goals that we set out to do. We met the population targets, kept incumbents in place, and finding polling place options too. Especially since we had to add so many new polls, being able to find a place to to put those those new precinct polls was a relief.
Did you actually go to those organizations and say, would it be okay to put the the polling place?
I did not, but Connie and her team have already.
So there's already agreements?
Yes, they've already gotten confirmation and approval. And we even had a few backups in play. You know, we were talking to, they they were talking to a variety of places to figure out like, well, if one doesn't work out. We had top choices, you know, what would be optimal. But yeah, there were some precincts that we had a couple of options come through. And Marty's mentioned this, but our timeline this year is drastically shorter than what historically, you know, takes to do this. The census delay really threw a lot off. And then with the redistricting commission not going according to plan and going to the Supreme Court, it was yet another delay. And the general assembly maps didn't come out until the very end of 2021. Alright, so we'll go ahead and dive in and look at these lines that were drawn at the state level that greatly informed how we would draw our local level districts. This is, these are the boundaries for the new House of Delegates covering our area. We now have House 41 and House 42. Everyone in Montgomery County is in one of those House of Delegate districts. And then side by side, this is the new House of Delegates next to the old House of Delegate district lines. We really had, uh, these new lines are much easier for us to work with. The map drawers followed along our corporate boundary for much of the way, which really simplified things on our end. And same goes for the new state senate districts. Again, the corporate boundary was used as a guide for drawing the new senate districts. We now are covered by Senate four and five. The numbers are also completely different, by the way. There's not any real correspondence to old lines and new lines with our general assembly. And so here again, this is rather different than what we had before. Christiansburg no longer gets all sliced and diced like it did last time. And this is just really technical. We use software that we already maintain and pay for on a regular routine basis. We didn't purchase any additional software licensing to do this. We just used all the skills and resources we already keep in-house. The 2020 census block data, we got off of the redist, the Virginia redistricting website, since they also included the prisoner adjusted populations, which we were supposed to use for this. Tied back population data to current districts and worked from there.
Are those numbers in those boxes, the census block or no?
Which numbers?
Well, like right in the middle, that that highlighted block, 860?
Oh, yes, that's the population.
Is that a census block?
That's a census block. That is, um, I chose that one. That's a screenshot from my process. That one particular block that's highlighted is on Virginia Tech campus, and it's got 860 people in it. And I put it in your district.
But the question is, how many of them vote? Do we know or do we care? We do care based on that 5 and 4,000 number.
There's registered voters.
Do we know how many people vote in these districts?
We know how many are registered to vote.
Registered in the precincts, yeah.
Yeah. And I will say, Virginia Tech campus is one of the most tricky areas with this, because it is so incredibly dense.
And the population changes every year because it's mostly freshmen, right?
Yeah, they, these are dorms.
Right.
Yeah. The numbers won't change so much as who is there.
Right.
Yes, that, yeah, by cha, by change, that's what you mean, like the, yes. There's high turnover. Yeah, so I guess this is the old and this is the new. There's not too crazy when you look at it at first glance, but we will go ahead and look at on a district by district view now. And if you have questions, go ahead and jump in. Let me put this on full screen. Okay. So starting with A, this is the old A. And that's the new A. It might be kind of hard to see for you all, but the blue hatched area is a gain for District A. And the red hatched areas are where it used to be District A, but now it's not. A also got a couple of new precincts with the way the corporate line runs, which also happened to be a new state senate boundary. You're left with looking at like the county area precincts and the inside town limit precincts. And the two will not mix. So a portion of G that was outside of town limits naturally needed to go to A to avoid having a split precinct. Because it wasn't a large enough area on its own with people to be its own precinct, if you follow.
It it really was one of the biggest driving forces for new precincts was the split.
Very much.
Because we had to, we, anything that was just in town, it had to be its own precinct. It was because then you would have, if you would have taken county, outside county residents, then or unincorporated county residents, that would have been a split.
Very interesting.
And that's the story of how I lost all of my unincorporated county residents.
Yes.
Every single one.
Yes.
All gone.
Yes.
All gone.
All gone.
Just town now.
I have none left.
Yes, that's exactly the story.
So I've I've got a question. This is my district, right? So you gave me a little bit more of downtown, but took away Airport Acres.
Yes.
Is there any, what was your logic behind that?
Well, it really was all because of E. E already had an on-campus precinct. However, E also had to cross through portions of town of Blacksburg to get to campus. And if you're trying to have a district that's contiguous and somewhat has a shape that makes sense, I needed to give more in-town but off-campus area to E. Otherwise, that would choke off completely the campus E from the rest of E.
Yeah, it wouldn't be contiguous.
Right.
Right.
Right. And the population that E had on campus was, there it, there would have been very big consequences of the numbers balance elsewhere if I took it out of E completely. So now, now the the campus population is spread across three different districts rather than just two. Now it's A, E, and F that have on-campus population. Is that anterior, that's part of it.
Well, I understand that, right? But it it, and perhaps I'm not understanding the whole, I get a couple of extra streets in downtown Blacksburg that if I gave up, it'd still be contiguous to E. And Airport Acres would be part of my district.
There's no people over there at what you're looking at, I think.
No?
Unless.
I thought, I thought I saw like the dorm was 806.
Yes. Yes, you got some of the dorms. But there was, it, it was a puzzle.
How many people in Airport Acres? It might be, actually, you did put the number.
Yes.
Uh, 280. How about taking half of those four dorms there and giving back? Because that's a community, you you see, when you you just cut off the whole community that's used to belonging to South Main Street, you know? That's, that's what I'm saying. So if there's something that you can do about that, that'd be great. The other thing is, so I have two precincts that are outside of my district. One's on campus, shared, and one is Christ Episcopal.
Well, they're they're all in your district. There's, you mean polls that are outside of their precinct bounds?
Squires.
Yeah, that's the on-campus.
Do I have squires in my district? No.
No, but it's within a mile. That's for the on-campus residents.
And then Christ Episcopal Church, I couldn't figure out. Yeah, that's in G.
Yes, but it'll serve the residents of A too, which it's, I think, just under half a mile.
And G also, or just A too?
Only, yeah, one poll, one precinct. No precincts, share poll, well, plenty of squires, but.
There's a couple, yeah, like Community Center, I think.
But they put up partitions.
There's separate polls, but.
Yes.
Interesting.
Yes.
That's all my questions for now.
Anyone else have questions on this one? When we get to G and F, we'll look at some of these same areas anyway, since one district's loss is another one's gain. Okay, so this is the former District B. And here's the new District B. The larger geographic areas outside of town of Christiansburg limits, they look big, but there's really a lot less population density going on there. On the west side, it's probably hard to see, but south, I I believe that's Crab Creek, there's a House of Delegate boundary. It's more the squiggly line. That kind of, that became a boundary that I didn't want to cross because again, a Virginia General Assembly boundary. So B, B had a higher population compared to some of the other districts. So a lot more of that give and take and balancing the scales to meet those population requirements happen inside of town limits, more so than outside. Any, oh, and we added a precinct in in B as well.
Right, so I was looking at, and that was one of my questions, if Bellevue Elementary School becomes a precinct?
Yes, so Bellevue Elementary will now serve the new B3. We had a B3 before, but this time B3 is only the the county portion of that side of of town. So all of that outside of Christiansburg Town Limits that runs along Pepper's Ferry Road, they'll be going to Bellevue Elementary to vote.
That's why one of the questions about the Price's Fork, that intersection and all that construction being done during election. That's what I was thinking about. And then if that turn lane for Bellevue will be completed too, because there's not great parking there, and that is a very busy intersection and traffic is constantly backed up. Now, I know that will not be a school, school day for that, but that was a, that was something with all that congestion and construction.
Right.
To go on during election time. Then on the, at the rec center, you're going to have two of my precincts at the same, because that is a big precinct to begin with.
Yes, that's why we had to cut it up.
Okay. And so you're, so it'd be the same building, just separate, separated, and then, okay.
Yeah.
And then I, and I, and I, and I, you know, I just praise you guys because, like I said before, you have all of these stipulations where you can't split the precincts. It's got to be no more than fi, you know, five or plus five negative to be substantially equal. You can't block, can't split your census blocks. And then, of course, that's, I understand that's why sometimes for other districts, it's going to be within that mile. Because to do all those things, I don't even know how you did it. And given that the census information was so late, and then you had to wa, wait on the state to redistrict to get all of that, bless your hearts. I mean, and now we got a, what, March 21st deadline?
21st.
Yeah.
So it's amazing that you're able to do this. And I do understand why that even though it looks like you gained a lot of area, it's the population. And then in some dense areas, Supervisor Fidzikowski will be getting a lot to make up for that.
Yeah.
Right now, that's all I have. Thank you, Ingrid.
So District C, here's what C was for the last 10 years. And C also was a low, lower in population and needed to find people. And there's the new C. Running south of Christiansburg Town Limits, there is, it's, it's the western bound of that hatched blue area to the south. There's a general assembly, state senate boundary running there where it made sense to just put all of that from from D to C so that there could be a contiguous same state senate overlap rather than two different supervisor districts going through this one. I'm explaining this poorly. General Assembly boundaries created a natural migration of, from District D to C. And again, the most drastic number gains, losses, balancing around happened inside of town limits where you just have the most people living. And C also has, I believe, one more, yeah, one more precinct than it did before. So now there, it goes up to C5, five precincts. Any questions on this one? And then moving right over to D, this is what D was before. And here's the new D. D wasn't too crazy far away from the population target, but it was still necessary to, you know, balance the, you know, population blocks to get the neighboring districts just right. And inside town limits, there's, you know, the the give and take happening there. And D, incidentally, went down by one precinct. Just the way the number of registered voters worked between in-town limits and out of town limits, everyone was able to fit between the four different precincts created there. There's two in the county and two in the town. Questions?
No, I would like to meet with y'all sometime so I can get me a map that has the name of the roads so I can see where we're moving around.
Yes, I, we can print off some very large size maps for you. That would be easier to see that level of detail as well.
But we just need where the the road names.
Yes, yes, yeah, only the major roads are are labeled on this.
Then you took Pilot all the way away from me.
I know, I know. It was a whole precinct in its own. I hope it's okay.
And the church up on Lovin' Mount Road, where did they, where did you move them to?
The church down, so that church that was a poll, it'll still be their poll. The Abundant Life Church, right? The one down Old Pilot?
No, the one over in Lovin' Mount.
You're talking, okay.
Over next to Bradford.
Yes.
Bethel.
Yes, Connie had feedback about that location. Now they will be voting. Yes. Which is within a mile of the precinct.
Be where?
It's within a mile of the precinct, but it's technically not in the precinct itself.
Christiansburg Middle School?
Yeah, yeah. And previously, you know, the the precincts as they ran before, it's kind of hard to see here, but almost all the precincts had some. but a- almost all the precincts had some, it would cross town boundaries. So there was a lot of people outside of town, but they had their poll, their precinct extended ins- inside of town limits. Whereas, you know, that's not the case now. But as long as that polling place is within a mile of the closest boundary. So they're, they're still driving into town to go vote, which for many will, will be the same. All right, moving on to E, this is what E was before. You can see the kind of hook it, it does going into town to touch Virginia Tech Campus. And so what we did here was give it a little more population off-campus, but inside-town limits so that there could be a precinct there. And E also gave way to some of District B. E was one of our, our highly populated districts after the census count was done. And E also has one more precinct than it did before.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask you, eh, eh, and why is that?
Just the way there was in-town and out-of-town.
Yeah, but they're both in-town.
The.
Three and fours in-town.
But I think they're too big to merge them as one.
And, and three, three could only be on-campus. So people living off of campus needed to be in a separate precinct.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And Warm Hearth will be a new polling place within District D.
That's really good.
Which apparently was quite receptive. Yeah, to be, to be a new poll.
I suspect it was.
Okay, getting into F, this is what F looked like before redistricting. Also had high numbers in its population count. And F was probably the least drastically changed of all of our districts. All the polls and precincts are the same. It didn't add any precincts or lose any. All the polling places, I believe, remain the same. But it, you know, it did a little bit of offloading its excess population into G, which needed to gain. And then a little bit of, you know, with being one of the campus, uh, precincts, there was some balancing there. Any questions on F?
What's the? Were you gonna ask?
No, I'm okay.
Um, the F three blue lines?
F gained that, yeah.
Say that again?
That's area that went into F. That wasn't F before.
The cow for- farms or the?
It, it includes Oak Lane, which is where the Greek.
Oh, okay.
Communities are. But it is more land than people. There's not a lot of people on the south portion that it lost. That was just also going for more contiguous shapes.
Why, again, are we splitting up downtown Blacksburg? Because of the density of the population down there, or?
It's like trying to balance a scale, and you're within the margins of like a couple hundred units. And some, a lot of your weights are like in the thousands. That's really what was going on. Finding the right, uh, precision with the different blocks that you could move. And also not, not like crack up neighborhoods in super weird ways that would just like, you know, um, getting a description where like turn left at this street, and then this next right, like rather than keeping to more larger roads that people are familiar with that might make sense to create a boundary. I think the scale analogy is the best I can do. You know? The graphs throughout as I was working, you know, there, it's like, just need a couple more hundred here, take a hundred there out. And some of the options, it's like you move one thing and it's too much.
And it's the same in Christiansburg too. I mean, it's, it's where our population is. It's in the two urban centers, Blacksburg, Christiansburg. So any of the juggling of numbers really had to occur in those areas.
And then finally at G, this is the old G, and only had two precincts before. Now we've got three, and, you know, it's our most densely populated district. It, even though it needed to add some people in, you can see, uh, with the exception of the part west of four sixty, it didn't take a whole lot of area to find enough people to put, put back in there. And we were also lucky enough to find, uh, polling places that, that would work for that third precinct.
What is that, the name of that street on the western border? Is that a street?
Uh, are you looking at the corporate line? Of town of Blacksburg?
Corporate line's the blue line, isn't it? Or?
Oh, the, the, the one that crosses, yeah, To- Tom's Creek is the one running, um, yeah, from Price's Fork northward.
And then the upper line from like twelve o'clock to ten o'clock?
That's the corporate boundary?
That's the corporate boundary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um, I've said this, uh, on more than one occasion. Um, when looking at putting a new precinct in G, there are options that are not, uh, faith communities. And I think that that's particularly important in District G, um, being that it's the most dense. It's also, um, probably arguably one of the most, uh, religiously diverse. And so I know that we've got, the G three is, um, a church. Um, but then on the first, it's Blacksburg Christiansburg Fel-, Blacksburg Christian Fellowship, excuse me. Um, it says, we're still awaiting confirmation of that poll.
Oh, you don't have the most up-to-date map?
It's what it says right here. It says on the first page of this, waiting, awaiting confirmation of G three.
We received confirmation today on G three. Friday? What do we get today? Christ Episcopal, Christ Episcopal, and that was for the A two.
So is there any way to change it to a, a non-religious facility?
If we could find one.
There's a rescue squad, there's custom catering, there's Blacksburg New School.
Custom catering was one of the first options, and we, we were unable to get ahold of anyone over there.
I think they're a church now.
Church anyway.
It is a church now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, what about the rescue squad facility? Yeah. So if we didn't check at the rescue squad, can we check and see? That's a public facility. It's much more innocuous.
Emergency facilities?
I mean, we could check. I know sometimes there.
Can try to find out.
They have nice meeting rooms, that's for sure.
Okay.
And it meets, I know it's out of G three, the location of the rescue squad, but, um, as you can see, the scale on the bottom, I.
It'll be close enough.
It'll be within the scale, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be within, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I would really, I, I've said it a few times when we've talked about adding a precinct, that I want to look at options that are not in houses of worship. That's pretty important to me.
Yeah, understood.
Can we, um, because we know, like, the students weren't counted, that should have been counted in G, can we?
There's nothing that can be done?
Can we make it on the small side, within the five percent? Can it be at ninety-five percent? The ideal size?
I mean, the, the target's gotta be within five percent of the ideal number.
Right, so if it was at ninety-five percent of the ideal number, it'd be, meaning the numbers that we're using are skewed right now. If we build our map skewed, then you're gonna have a lot more people show up at these polling places than you think.
I don't want my district to be intentionally drawn on the small side.
You don't?
I'd rather it be closer in line with what it's supposed to be than intentionally drawn small.
Well, what should it be? It should be smaller, right? Because it should have more people.
It should have more people. That's what we can say as a matter of opinion, and I believe that to be true, but I don't want it intentionally drawn on the small side. We've got it, the way that it is now, it's, uh, estimated to be fourteen-four-twenty-two, and our target is fourteen-two-eighty-five. So it's really close to the number.
So, um, what do you call it? If there are more people in a district, they have more power? More voting power? In the larger, larger district? If there are actually more voters in your district than, than the ideal number, right? So it's gonna likely skew, um, like Senate and I guess it doesn't split the Senate or the House of Delegates, so that's good. So I guess, I guess that's good, yeah.
Ingrid, if there's gonna be more, if we come to a point where there is more than four thousand people voting at each of these precincts, then that's something at that time that we would readdress?
That's why we've been talking about the third precinct in line.
Right.
Yeah, based on actual, how many people are voting.
Right.
But not who lives there.
Yeah, I think the first time that we brought up G might need another precinct was after the twenty-sixteen presidential election because of the number of votes cast at that, at G two, right, or G one, the Community Center.
Yeah, and I think that was G one.
And in that case, what, we, we would just add another precinct?
Or you could change precinct boundaries. You could, if, let's say if one was much bigger than two, then you could move some of the people in one to two. That's one option, or create a new precinct, yeah.
And so the, the problem with the Community Center, um, is they have the capacity to have a larger number of voters, but they don't have the parking to bring in. I mean, that one is one. And I've been to the Christiansburg Rec Center on Election Day too, where it's just people through the whole parking lot because you're out of parking options, so they could certainly house them in there, just not park them.
Yeah, that was something discussed, how like for G, for the extra G precincts, like this backup plan that we didn't really feel thrilled about because of the parking concerns. But both rec centers had approved that they could add a partition and act as two different precinct polls. And in some of these precincts, just finding a, a place, period, was quite the struggle, especially the ones that are, really are just residential communities where there's no public buildings to speak of, let alone churches.
I was just gonna ask, did you ever resolve the hundred-and-eighty-two voters in Steve's district, which one they should go to?
We put them in the next, the C five.
C five, okay.
Yeah, we, we spoke with Steve about that, got his opinion.
Yay. Does anybody else have any comments or questions to follow up?
I'd like to make one. I'd like to know why we couldn't use Price's Fork Elementary. I mean, I know that people at Warm Hearth liked the idea of having that precinct there, but especially if these two new housing developments going on, the biggest majority of people are gonna be on that side. And they don't have to drive to Warm Hearth, which is not very easily accessible. I just wonder if we could just use the school.
We really talked about the school as well. E one was the interesting precincts that almost had too many options. Had quite, quite a few locations that were good for polls. And to my understanding, you know, enough precincts, that's, that's a matter of logistics so you don't have too many people voting at the same poll. We don't have to, and Marty can jump in if I'm wrong, but to my understanding, we don't have to wait till the next census to add a poll if we have to. That's where, if we need to create a new precinct there and maybe use the Elementary School, Price's Fork, um, as a poll.
I just think for the people on that side of that, uh, precinct, i- it's so unhandy. I mean, my mother lives out there, and I hate going out there just because it's so out of the way. I mean, for me, you know, but, yeah, I'd like to look at that. I don't know how much negotiation there is into this, but.
No, it's, I mean, it's up to the board, you know, when it, there's certain changes we can't make, or, or, or changes we make affects other areas and it creates other problems that sometimes are worse. But when you're talking about polling places, that, so long as they're within the precinct and, or within a, a mile of it, then that's the board's call on, on where they want those.
And Connie can probably speak more to that, that side of things. I was just dropping some dots on the map to for, here, here are our options, or the places we're thinking about. And then our voter registrar people would go, go tour, and they made all kinds of field trips looking at potential polls. I didn't go to any, so.
Connie, do you wanna come up and talk about that? And you could also give us the effect of, on your office and about all this redistricting.
If there's gonna be a racket, that's what I'm gonna hear. That's what I'm gonna hear about right there.
So we did take a lot of tours and went and looked at a lot of polling places. April, I just wanna ask you, have you ever been inside Blacksburg Christian Fellowship?
I actually have been. Um, my, uh, a friend of mine's daughter used to attend Pioneer Girls there.
As far as churches goes, there's not a lot of religious stuff. In fact, they asked, did they have to move anything? We couldn't think of a thing, and the board went with us, a thing for them to move to get out of the way for someone that would not want to vote in a church per se. Certainly, we will call the rescue squad.
I appreciate that, and I'll tell you why I feel that way, because I don't, I don't know that I've ever shared it. In two thousand and six, when, uh, there was a constitutional amendment on the ballot to reaffirm the Commonwealth's opposition to same-sex marriage, I voted at a church, and on the marquee in front of the church was, it's a sin, vote against it or what have you. And I was so offended that a polling place where I was going to vote was, that, that, that was existing there as well. And that's part of the reason that I feel like there's a mixed mes- message. I did complain. I complained there every year that I had to vote there, that I was having to vote in that location. I don't want my residents to feel that way. I just don't want them to feel like they're being driven to go somewhere, um, that. And if, I, I, and this is certainly nothing against Blacksburg Christian Church at all. I know that they, um, are very well-respected in the community. It's just the feeling that for me, going to that church and having, it wasn't, it wasn't about the church. It wasn't that. It was, that was very, it was just, you know, it's a sin. It was wrong, I thought.
Uh, we will check the rescue squad. Uh, we had talked about it a little bit, and we kind of felt like with an emergency place, with the, uh, fire trucks and ambulances having to get out, we thought maybe that might not be a good situation. McCoy, we currently use, and sometimes it's an issue there, so we kind of avoided that area, but.
If you wouldn't mind to look, um, I would, I would personally appreciate it quite a bit. Thank you.
Sure. We're looking very forward to not having multiple ballots in each polling place, um, falling. Um, Falling Branch currently has four ballot styles there. It'll make things a whole lot easier on the officers, let alone the voters. They don't come in to look at a board to see which one of these ballots I'm choosing, which one is mine particularly. Um, it'll be a little cheaper on us, I hope. Some of the polling places that we toured with the board members, um, weren't adequate polling places. They weren't, um, adequate for our equipment to get through the doors. One church doesn't even have double doors for us to get the cages through the doors. Um, one church would only allow us in their basement. There were some issues in the basement because there was standing water at the door when we went to go visit it. Um, parking on the side of that church, it wasn't, it wasn't maybe four parking spots there, and they could go around the building to park. Some places we contacted just do not want elections in their facilities. So it, it was, it was a task with what short timeframe that we had. Um, I have asked Mark, Mark for seventy-eight thousand dollars for additional supplies just for redistricting. That does not include the equipment. Um, the Electoral Board is currently in the process of going through voting machine demos and making a selection sometime maybe the end of first, end of March, first of April. We are on a tight deadline, March the twenty-first is the deadline set by the state. Um, registrars all across Virginia are concerned about meeting that deadline, but as, as of five o'clock today, that deadline still exists.
Honey, I, I was gonna say, I do have a concern with thinking about that rec center, how busy it is to put two polling places?
The Christiansburg Rec Department, um, the director and the assistant director have both said they were actually closed the rec department on election days for us. They will allow our elections officers to park in the back, to leave some parking in the front, and then, of course, you know how it kind of goes down the hill there to Food Line. I know it's not ideal, but it's the largest location that we could find in Christiansburg to meet the needs for the people there.
What about the back lot there? I know a private owner owns that. Um, is that something that we could check in to see if, that we could possibly use that for parking? I know the Lions Club in the past has, um, got permission or?
Sure, I'll, I'll ask.
That would open up parking because that is a very busy spot, and we, of course, don't want anybody not to vote because they can't find a, a parking spot. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Um, what's, what's, why are we getting new machines?
The machines are aging. We started purchasing those machines in twenty twelve. The last set of machines were purchased in twenty fifteen, and that was all thirty ADA machines. The state says the machines can be eight to ten years old, no longer than that.
How many machines are you talking about at this moment that you're gonna be purchasing?
Currently, we have thirty machine, I'm sorry, forty machines and thirty ADA machines. That's not counting what we'll need to add with five additional polling locations. And the reason for additional equipment is pre-processing, the other mandate that's passed down by the state.
So what do we do when we wanna talk to somebody about, what would it look like if we moved this line over a couple of blocks or that line over a couple of blocks? How do we go about doing that?
Um, I, I put a note here, we, we, we can check on the Airport Acres thing just to see what kind of ramification there's. Keep in mind, even the smallest change because of census blocks, it could throw, create other problems where we make this one change, now we're making four or five other ones, and, and, and it's almost like we're starting all over again. So it, I don't know if that's gonna be the case with that, it might not be. Um, but, I mean, we'll look at it and see.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Just, just one thing. Over on Rafferty Road going through Plum Creek, you know, we used to have them three people had to vote by theirself in the senate election deal. We get to move them around?
They'll be fixed.
Thank you.
No more special elections.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna thank, um, our staff and Connie and her staff. To me, I'm overwhelmed at the fact that you were able to do this and that you were able to do it on, on a shorter timeframe. I mean, it's incredible, and I like Marty have been involved with the, moving the paper around. Um, this is just, it's incredible. And kudos to all of you.
Ingrid is amazing, absolutely amazing.
Yeah, I would second that.
She really is.
She has found her ideal line of work, thank you, Ingrid.
She is a true asset to the county.
We don't wanna lose her to the state if they try to recruit her next time around.
No, ma'am. Thank you all.
Anyone else? And I would echo the same, and then the fact that you used our own county resources and skills and did that, I mean, I joke with you, you did that with one hand tied behind your back, right? All the challenging, challenges that we have and all the state stipulations, and then the short timeframe. So we do appreciate each of you for your diligence and hard work, uh, doing that.
I have a question. Um, so for District G and F, they have three polling stations, and A, B, and C have five. And each of those dist, all the districts are supposed to be the same size.
Well, it's population, but not land size. Population, they're the same, and you've gotta, you've got to make sure that your population that you're representing can get to a polling place within a reasonable amount of time.
Also, to be clear, a precinct does not indicate actual population.
Is that more of a, a reflection of land mass?
It's registered voters. So you could have one district, two different districts that have equal populations, but maybe one has five precincts because people there love to vote.
Right.
Um, maybe the other one has more people under eighteen or that aren't US citizens, or, or convicted felons. You know, it, it, pre, number of precincts is how many people register to vote and need a place to go vote.
Or are college students that are registered in another locality?
And the precincts are all different sizes, if you look at them. The biggest thing, it may be why one district has a lot more precincts, is mainly because I think, because of split precincts. We, we had to create county-only precincts, where before they were, they were county and town, and then we had to, uh, create town-only ones as well. So when you're in one of those districts, um, that get a lot of your population through the towns, then you, you're gonna find that there's more precincts there.
And I think it will really help voters, because I know they're so, they were so confused about voting for town council members, like when I went to my precinct, I got to vote for town council, and then someone else said, well, I didn't.
Yeah.
You know, and like they didn't know why.
And we don't have that anymore, that's, that's gone.
And that was a problem.
Are we gonna have enough volunteers? They're not volunteers, they get paid the big bucks on Election Day, I, I understand.
Officers, yeah.
Connie's nodding her head, so I think no concern.
Not about the big bucks, but about the.
If I could say one more thing, then I'll shut up. Um, if anyone has a question that you wanna specifically come in and speak with me and Ingrid, uh, we'll, we'll certainly make time, we need to do it sooner than later, like within the next week or two, if that's possible. And we'll go over with you, and if you have questions, we can show you. She can break it in, into small, I mean, larger scale with smaller areas, and, um, and, and it'll give you a, probably a better idea. Um, so, I mean, we'll, we'll definitely look at the Airport Acres one, but if you wanna come into and see everything, we can, we can definitely set that up, we're there. Yeah, I know Ingrid's here most days.
Zoom and a screen share would also be doable.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Zoom it, you mean?
We can watch the, the population bar graphs change as we try, try out different scenarios.
That sounds awesome.
I've, I've tried, there are like six, six drafts I did, if you wanna see the different iterations, like, there's a lot of spitballing there of like, well, this, this met population targets, this one met, there's different versions. And that final one is what, um, the rest of the team, this was an iterative process, by the way. Um, we did some work on it, we all met, we looked at it again, and over, this was a, very much an iterative process with everyone putting eyeballs on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ingrid.
Thanks. Madam Chair and Board Members, we have one other item under, uh, work session this evening, and that is related to, uh, Planning Commission members' term limits. Uh, we'd like to just have a brief discussion about the term limits that are currently in place for members of the Planning Commission. Currently, appointments are for four years, uh, with a two-term limit. So a, a Planning Commission member can only serve a total of eight years. Currently, we have four members of the Planning Commission whose terms are set to expire in twenty twenty-two, and right now only one of those four is eligible for reappointment. The other three have, will be at their two-term limit. Of the five remaining members of the Planning Commission, three are new this year. Uh, so if the two-term limit stays in place, uh, we could potentially have six new members with less than a year's experience on the Planning Commission, and that has been a bit concerning, uh, for staff. Uh, what we wanted to seek the board's direction on this evening is if there's any desire to either eliminate the two-term limit uh, for Planning Commission members, or considering, or, excuse me, or consider extending the current Planning Commission members' terms for one additional term. In other words, either eliminate the term limits completely or allow for three, uh, terms as opposed to two as it's currently stated. And did I get that pretty close to right, Marty?
You did, there, there is, there could be a scenario where they actually serve more than eight years, because if you, if someone comes in and finishes someone else's term, we don't count that as a term. So you could, so it could technically go more than eight, but I think you got the gist. The problem is, we're worried about losing institutional knowledge, um, on that board. Um, there's other boards that you, uh, currently don't have term limits on. Um, we, we can find those for you if that makes, if it helps, it's helpful. This is one of the most important boards that you guys appoint. I mean, they, they give you recommendations on all your land use policies, on your ordinances, rezonings, um, capital planning, um, so, uh, it, it's an important body, um, so that, that's one of the reasons we wanted to bring it up.
I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, isn't that, I mean, we can, we have to reappoint them over four years anyway, so if there's an issue, that you always have that opportunity, right? So I don't know why we have term limits on those, because we have such a hard time getting people.
I can give you the history, um. We used to have a really hard time getting people to serve on our different commissions, believe it or not. We really had to go out and recruit them, and then we went through a period where we had so many, and so many really well-qualified citizens applying, that we, then we felt like, okay, now we need to give everybody a turn. So that's how we came up with the two-term limit. If you want the history of it, that's how it happened. And we're really, I think we're, we're pretty lucky. I know we've had some, uh, um, challenges with parks and rec, but really, we've gotten really well-qualified people to apply for these different, you know, positions, so. But I agree, the Plan Commission is really, really important, and you wouldn't wanna have to start with basically a whole new one.
So, um, I, um, personally actually do believe in term limits for elected officials, for commissions, I think that term limits are important. Um, I'm sensitive to the upheaval that's caused by pretty much eliminating the institutional knowledge. I think that that's, um, very, very important to try to maintain and train up when necessary. I would be pretty comfortable with keeping the term limits and offering, uh, the option to do an additional term to the ones that are getting ready to expire, so we can retain the institutional knowledge. But then also keep the, um, the, the opportunity for other people that might wanna be able to serve in the future. Um, keep that also as an option.
So you're saying three terms?
I'm, I'm saying if, if, looking at the options that were given here, should we eliminate the term limit or consider extending the current Planning Commission members' terms for one additional term? I prefer the idea of extending the current Planning Commissioner members' terms for one additional term, but that's based in my fundamental idea that term limits are necessary.
Supervisor Fuzikowski?
Uh, I think both, both plans have their merits, for sure. Um, but I would have to agree with Supervisor Demats that I think there should be an ending point. And, um, look on the bright side, we could always vote on this later, or whoever's left on this board could vote on it at some point in the future and change it. So I think for right now, I think that, um, adding that extra term solves the issue that we're kinda concerned about. And, uh, I, I, I think it's a doable thing. I, I can't imagine anybody would really be too upset about it. But I do agree that, you know, in, in another respect, it, it may not, you know, why even have term limits at all, but, um, there's a lot of great people out there, and if they wanna serve, and, um, it, it would be nice to allow them that opportunity.
I will agree, I, I agree with April about the term limits, um, for elected officials, I, I totally get that. Um, I just, I feel like this is a totally different animal, but I'm fine with three terms. I mean, I'm not, I'm just kicking out ideas, so hold me to, hold my feet to the fire, too, too bad.
Supervisor.
Uh, could we extend two of the positions instead of all four?
Extend it to three for the Planning Commission.
Because we'll just run into the same problem four years from now, but the new members will then have four more years of experience.
Exactly, so it will solve, it will make it better, yeah.
Can we, um, uh, make it in our, um, recommendation that it goes back to two year, two terms at that point for everybody? Instead of extending it to three terms for everybody? Then you get people mad.
I, 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 what, what, what we could do is just say it's gonna be three-year term during this time period, and we'll put, make it a time period.
Three-term limit, you mean, not a three-year term?
Yeah, yeah, three-year term, yeah, three, we'll change the rules to.
Between now and four years from now.
Or no, now, any appointments be, for, between now and maybe a year or how long the appointment process is.
They have three-term limits, whereas anybody outside of that window would have two-term limits, is what you're saying.
You're not changing how many years they serve, you're just changing who's eligible to be appointed.
For a third term.
Yeah, and so it'll be that period that you'll allow people to be eligible.
I would recommend that. I like to, I mean, eight years is a long time. And I think we are finding really good can, you know, really good commissioners, so I would love to keep it at two-year, two terms of four years. But I see the need at this point in time and would, um, appreciate the institutional knowledge if they're willing to serve a third term, very much appreciated. So I would like to have a window that that's extended and that window goes away once we have more institutional knowledge, because people are staying on the board, or on the board for a little longer, so.
Yeah, I mean, we could make it, we could make it through this calendar year, two thousand twenty-two. There's four, four of that'll be coming up. And three of them are looking at the term limit right now.
Supervisor King?
I like the idea of just adding an extra term to them, instead of throwing all this discussion, you know, you can serve three terms, but they can't serve one. I'd like to see us just go flat across the board and just add an extra term to it.
That would probably be the simplest way to approach it, for everybody.
That way you don't have all that language in there, and, you know, somebody might get on the board and they say, well, I get three terms, now you don't, you get two.
Yeah.
So I like to just keep it across the board.
Yeah, I think it ought to be across the board for three. I mean, obviously. I mean, obviously, you can change it anytime.
Yeah.
I agree. I think that there's a lot of merit to have that experience and mentorship, um, so that's important, but we also, I, I also agree with Supervisor Demots and Fidzikowski that there should be term limits and opportunity for other people to, to serve, um, so I would be in favor for a third term and, um, set those limits.
I'm okay with that. Um, I have a question. Um, are the people that we're still, um, having on the Plan Commission, are they still taking the certified planners? Do they still, are they still doing that?
I'm looking at, looking at Bree, and she's saying yes, so yes, they are.
That's so, that is so important, and I'm so proud that, you know, our folks have been doing that for quite a while, I think. Yay, thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, I think I heard a consensus, um, to add a third term, an additional four-year term to the two terms, which will be a total of three. Marty, we'll need to develop, I guess, a resolution for the board to adopt.
Yeah, next meeting, we'll.
Address that at the next meeting, so we will move that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time on that issue.
Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion?
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Next is items of consent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Just a second. My computer's a little slow. Okay, sorry about that.
Sometimes we're at the mercy of the, how fast the computer moves.
All right, consent. Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, under new business now.
Yes, ma'am, we have three items of new business this evening. The first item is, uh, removal of Cornbread Road from the rural addition priority list. Uh, this resolution removes Cornbread Road from the priority list. Uh, it's currently listed as priority one. Uh, throughout the past year, county staff's been working with all parties involved with this to get the necessary right-of-way in order to move the project forward. After numerous attempts to obtain right-of-way from all the parties, it's been determined that some land on, some landowners are not willing to grant the necessary right-of-way at this time for this project. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that Cornbread Road be removed from the priority list, as the right-of-way is not obtainable. Staff also recommends that Cornbread Road not be restored to the rural addition priority list until all rights of way issues are resolved.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Madam Chair, second item is scheduling a public hearing for March 14th on the propos- I can't talk with this mask on, on the proposed ordinance amending and reestablishing the election districts, election precincts, and polling places for Montgomery County based on the 2020 U.S. census.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and that date was March the 14th?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. March 14th here at seven?
7:15 P.M., yes, ma'am.
Any, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Last item under new business is to schedule a public hearing also for March 14th at 7:15 P.M. on a proposed ordinance to amend the Montgomery County Code by adding sections 214 through 216, creating the Montgomery County, Virginia Department of Fire and Emergency Medical Services as a Department of Montgomery County, Virginia, to be managed by the Chief of the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Department under direct supervision of the county administrator.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Just a quick thing, me and Craig was talking about this. Would you explain to them how this is going to work?
That was exactly going, thank you, sir. I know that, uh, because of the way this is written, and, uh, there were some questions that came up regarding the fire side of the, of the statement. This is being written up because we don't have to go back and constantly re-amend the county code, so this is written up to create this Department of Fire and EMS. However, as we have discussed on numerous occasions, we all recognize right now, the challenge in Montgomery County is the emergency services side, not the fire side, and at this point in time, you know, we do not have any intention of bringing fire operations under county, uh, control, it will just be EMS. However, for purposes of amending the code, we recommend that it be all-inclusive, so twenty years from now, whenever the time may come, we don't have to go back and go through all this again to re-amend what we've created.
Supervisor Demots?
I have just a timing question, um, and I am, I guess, looking to those of you with more experience. My concern is, are we going to have two very heavy public hearings on the same night? Um, and the reason that I have concerns about that is if we have, say, a ton of people want to speak at both, would people come and then leave because there's so many people here that they don't think that they're going to get heard? Um, and so I'm not sure if the, I know the timing on the redistricting is very, very tight, um, but if the, if, if there's, I don't know if there's merit to the idea to do them on two different meeting dates.
I think that we need to have this public hearing as well, so that we can move forward with the fire rescue.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the EMS project, and get licensed, so I think that it is important for us to have this at this time.
Okay, that's valid. I just wanted to, to throw it out there.
Yeah, and I, I would also add to that, that it is, it is critical to get this license so that we can move forward. It takes so long to get things done that any delay in this would just, it would not be good for the county, for sure, and our citizens.
And I totally respect that. Yeah, if it's, if it's time-sensitive, then, then my objection or, or concern is.
I think that is a really valid concern, because that was what I was thinking, too. Um, so I'm wondering, with that in mind, maybe when we're planning that meeting, maybe that should be a very light meeting in view of the fact that we're going to have the, and we don't know how many people will show up.
That's true.
You know, it could be that maybe just a few, or you just don't know, so maybe we should keep that in mind.
Well, I, I appreciate those concerns being brought forth. We, you know, we do work hard to try to manage agenda, the load on each agenda to, um, certain times of the year, agendas are fairly light, then, especially as we start getting into budget season, they, they tend to load up a little bit, but we will, we will certainly keep that in mind. The other thing I wanted to mention, especially related to the election districts, um, we're going to put a whole lot of information out on the, on the county's website, uh, so hopefully a lot of folks, if they have questions or concerns, they can see that and, uh, communicate with us, so we may not have a large crowd that, that night. I don't, I'm, I don't remember ten years ago, um, I don't remember yesterday very well.
That's a procedural question, then?
Mm-hmm.
So if we have sign-up sheets, and say we have, um, both public hearings scheduled, and the, the EMS one is first, and then the other one is second, and we've got thirty people that sign up for this one and four people that sign up for this one, in a meeting, can we switch the order if it looks like?
Yes.
It might be advantageous for the citizens?
Yep, absolutely. It would just take a motion and a second to, all, change agenda.
It can always do that.
Because they're advertised to be at the same time, 7:15 or later after, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that solves all my concerns, thank you.
Good points.
Any other discussion? So I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blavens?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, now we're to reports. County Attorney.
I have nothing, uh, tonight, Madam Chair.
All right. County Administrator.
Madam Chair, other than wishing everyone a very happy Valentine's Day, I have nothing to add tonight as well.
All right. And we'll go to our board members. We'll start off with Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Um, I don't, no, I do not have anything to add.
Oh.
Thank you.
Supervisor King?
I don't have anything, but again, I would like to tell the staff and their spouses, I do appreciate them, we're getting ready to start these long meetings, and I do appreciate the, uh, spouses of the staff for allowing us to utilize them at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I have no report, thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
I want to thank all the staff that put a lot of thought, and Ingrid got a lot of praise today, um, Connie and her board, and Marty, of course, um, for putting together all those maps. Um, it's really going to help us and the communities figure out what might be best, that we can come to some kind of agreement. It's a shame that we have a short period of time to work on it, but it looks like we've got the tools to be able to do that pretty well, just the same, so, um, very happy to see our first draft. Thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
Um, just a couple of trail updates really quick. Uh, the Poverty Creek Trail System, I don't know if anybody has been out there or is planning on going out there, it is starting to become less muddy, so if people are delaying hitting that trail system because it's been pretty, uh, sloppy, it is no longer, it's starting to recover. And then also, another, um, I've seen this posted, and it's not getting, uh, very wide circulation, but there's Falls Ridge Preserve in Montgomery County, it's actually a nature conservancy property, and they have just closed the preserve, um, so it is now closed to the public. They are towing out of that lot, so if people are thinking of going to Falls Ridge Preserve and doing those hikes, that actually is a closed trail now, and you will be towed. That one is located, um, off of North Fork. Um, it's a temporary closure, hopefully, uh, what they posted on their website is we are repairing the trails and allowing nature to recover following an extended period of high visitation and overuse of the trails. Um, and if you go to their website, you can volunteer to help recover the trails so they can be reopened to the public. That's all.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Okay, I was just going to report that for VACO Government Day, that was held on February 3rd, Supervisor Demots and Chair Blavens, myself, and County Administrator Craig Meadows went down. We did our best to make sure that our, um, hmm, our fellow elected officials at the state level understand the term no unfunded mandates, and we did our best to support public education funding and law enforcement funding and everything else that we could think of that would benefit the locality. So we did try our best, and then Supervisor, Supervisor Chair Blavens and I stayed another two days to attend the VACO Institute for, uh, the Chair, Chair, Vice Chair's Institute, and, um, it was very well-attended. They had the most, um, attendees that they've ever had. There were twenty-nine, it was very well-organized, and we learned a lot of valuable information, so of course I had to do my VACO commercial. And, um, I think that's it, I think that's, we covered everything, right? Did I leave out anything out for Lobby Day that you guys can think of? I think we did our best.
We did.
To, to get to everyone, so.
I think we did.
We did, it was very productive.
Yeah, and so don't forget, we can always ask them to come back and give us a report about what they did do for us in Richmond this year, not to us, but for us. And that's ended that report.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. Um, I just wanted to add, and this can go along with Supervisor Demots', um, little thing she talked about for the Preserve of Ridge Falls there, is February the 17th is National Act of Kindness Day, Random Act of Kindness, so that would be an excellent opportunity to do a random act of kindness and, um, to show love to everybody, especially being Valentine's, uh, Day today, that would be a great opportunity. Again, Mary, I enjoyed, um, Mary has lots of great, Supervisor, Vice Chair Biggs has lots of experience, and she kept me straight during the Chair Institute, so I enjoyed our time together, and I do believe it was very productive, us being able to meet with our state legislators and to remind them of no unfunded mandates and the needs of, um, the local impact that their decisions make on us, um, daily, and to always do everything to promote and to make sure that Montgomery County prospers. With that being said, is there any other follow-up? Then this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you.